Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, nine AM, Wilson County Commissioner's Court. I call it order. Let the record reflect that we have full court forum. And before we begin, we're going to have our prayer by Elder Brown, Wilson County seven day.
My gracious Father, we thank you again for helping us awake to serve you another day. I ask that you'll be with the proceedings here for your Holy Spirit to guide and direct in each one. And again, I ask that you will be with those that have loved, loved ones or know that they have lost loved ones, and that your comforting hand will be upon them. Continue to guide us through the rest of this day, and we ask again for your Holy Spirit to be here, to guide and direct the proceedings, that it might go according to your will. So he's praying in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
General item number three, we have a public conference. We have Mr. Mario Raro from the Public Affairs for the San Antonio Food Bank.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Mario Blado Jr. I'm Chief of Government and Public Affairs at the San Antonio Food Bank. And let me first and foremost say, on behalf of Eric Cooper, our President and CEO, our Board, our organization, and our staff, thank you for the support that you've given to us over the years, and thank you for the leadership that you provide to this great county and the citizens in the townships within. Stopping by today just to talk a little bit about Hunger Action Month, that's Feeding America's National Hunger Awareness Campaign. Two hundred food banks stronger across the country. In our great state of Texas, we are one of twenty food banks. All two hundred and fifty-four counties are covered by a food bank service territory, and we now cover twenty-nine counties in southwest Texas. We're serving over a hundred thousand individuals in any given week in terms of nutrition and supportive programs. Hunger Action Month is a way to celebrate folks coming together to solve the issue of hunger and food insecurity. We couldn't do what we do without large grocery retailers like HEB, Costco, Walmart, Trader Joe's, but also food producers, processors, farmers and ranchers, and the community at large, all coming together to volunteer and support us to raise food, donate food, and to help us get food out to the communities and counties that we cover. We're working on the daily disaster of poverty, but do know we are also part of the EOC, national, state, and local. So hurricane, fire, flood, natural disaster, man-made disaster, we mobilize and we work with Tiedem, the governor, and Tiedem, Nimkid, and we mobilize food and water to localities as y'all stand up shelters. Most recently, the floods up in Kerr and Kendall and Tom Green, we cover those counties and those townships. We had to mobilize and serve pretty quickly up there. So do know that we're always a phone call, text away, and there's a lot of folks in this room that have rallied around us before over the years and stepped up in a big way, and so Wilson County and Florisville has a special place in our heart because this, this is a proud community. And with that, Judge, I know there's support around the food distribution at the end of the week at the Show Barn off Ninety-seven, that's at nine AM. So our truck will be out there and our crew, and I know a lot of great volunteers from this county will be there to support us. And if anyone has any questions, they can contact the food bank, safoodbank.org, or two-one-zero-four-three-one-eight-three-twenty-six. And we look forward to seeing y'all out there, Judge, and know if something, God forbid, ever happens out here, Sutherland Springs, Uvalde, both in our service territory, we're here for you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for the service, help.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners.
Judge, Mr. Jason Talley?
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge. How are you doing this morning? Great Monday morning. I just wanted to brief you on a really cool meeting we had September ninth here at the courtroom. It was a collaboration between a number of different entities, but this is with the Wilson County Economic Development Corporation that was recently formed, of course, and so we had a great turnout. I organized the meeting about a month ago. We had about six representatives from Greater SATX. We had mayor and city officials from Florisville, mayor from Poth, we had city administrator from Stockdale, and also the economic development folks from there. We had city administrator, economic development from Laverne, and then, of course, the president from Mission Rail Park. We also had Stephen Muller down from Ecor Global, which you've heard that name before, even brought some samples of the materials that they would be building at this park, once they establish there. The whole purpose of this was to get people together and show the importance of collaboration. And what was so cool after we got done with this meeting, so we met here, we had short presentations from Greater SATX, from myself and Mission Rail Park, and then we left after that meeting and went to a tour at the park. And after that, we concluded with lunch with the group. But the energy in the room is exciting. I haven't been to a meeting where I've seen so much excitement in Wilson County. Everyone at the meeting just said, oh, this is long overdue because the stress is working together for regional economic development, and we're all on the same team. And literally after the meeting, I got calls saying, hey, I'd be glad to serve on that. I'd be glad to help. So really what we're doing now is we're going to be building out the rest of our board to a board size of nine that would include representatives from Laverne, Poth, Stockdale. We're, we're pretty heavy on the Florisville side right now, so we want to be sure that we have all those folks from those other entities. The next step also is, as I mentioned, we focus on vocational education. We want to really solve some of those challenges in our county, and that would be building out some advisory committees on how we tackle that as a group countywide, not just each city entity. So that's exciting. And then I think everybody left there with the reality that we should focus on the manufacturing side because that's what's really going to keep people in the community with good jobs. There's a lot of opportunities just up the road at Mission Rail Park. And I just wanted to report to you, it's probably one of the first meetings I've seen with this kind of collaboration, and everybody left with an excitement and just stressing the fact that we all need to work together on economic development. Thank you.
General item number four, we have a specific conclusion of words in bond. We have Mr. Don Marnett, per eighty-ninth legislative session, state laws and rules update, Jeffrey Peridola, tax cybersecurity awareness training, and Brenda Cremoni, and Amanda Raul for tax cybersecurity. General item number five, we have Kennedy Montina, Wilson County clerk, discussing take action regarding Audrey Kailik taking the place of Judge Henry Whitman as one of the Wilson County Representatives for the Public Defender Office Board.
So this was okayed with, we did ask Judge Hartman if this was okay. Audrey is actually my alternate right now, so she's already familiar with everything. Judge Whitman is very busy, and sometimes we have meetings at the spur of the moment, so we just figured it would be better if we could go ahead and have somebody who already was kind of familiar with it that could take his place because we do have to have two representatives from Wilson County, and that would be me and Audrey.
Ms. Your bill there, can I motion on general item number five?
I'll make a motion to appoint Audrey Kailik to the PDO Board.
Sure.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Keen. We ended the discussion regarding the general item number five. You're none, I call for the vote, all who favor say aye.
Aye.
All who's against me, ayes and a noes.
Thank you.
General item number six, we have Paul Till Woberson, Thriving Hearts Crisis Center, discussing take action regarding the proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Good morning. Sorry, my voice is... Okay, so I'm going to read the proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security, and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, economic control and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly. Whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but cut across all economics, racial, and societal barriers, and are supported by societal indifferences. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole. Here in this community, Thriving Hearts Crisis Center, formerly Guadalupe Valley Family Violence Shelter, answered one thousand one hundred and eighty-two crisis calls and provided six thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven services to survivors from September two thousand and twenty-four to August two thousand and twenty-five. And whereas the women are not the only targets, men, young children, and the elderly are also victims. And sadly, emotional scars are often permanent, and domestic violence costs United States companies at least three point five billion in lost work time, increased healthcare and cost, higher turnover and lower productivity, and whereas it is battered women themselves who have been in the forefront of efforts to bring peace and equality to the home. Now therefore, we do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty, or sorry, September twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-five, as Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. Did you want me to finish all of that?
I'll finish. I'll entertain a motion for proclaiming item number six. October, correct? October twenty-two?
Yes.
Yeah, I think you said so.
I put, well, because I, at the very end, I put September for today, but October is the actual.
Thank you, motion. Reclaim October two thousand and twenty-five as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Wilson County. Motion made by Commissioner Keen, second by Commissioner Peridola. Any other discussion regarding this is general item. You're none, I call for the vote, all who's opposed, say aye.
Aye.
All who's against me, ayes and a noes. Motion passes. Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, and call all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our effort to prevent domestic violence, thereby strengthening the communities more fluidly, presented this twenty-second day of September two thousand and twenty-five.
Yes. Sure.
General item number seven, we have a report here on Wilson County Attorney's Office, discussing take action on approval of carpool solutions interface contract.
Yes, good morning. If you recall, this banner was, well, no, actually, it was the last meeting. Commissioner Martin asked about funding this, it's the database for the county as well as for our office, maintaining of records and the management of our office. It was twenty-five thousand dollars for the five thousand dollar management fee, and I believe you, Commissioner, asked if it was in the budget. And as I recall, the twenty-five thousand would come from the county clerk's data management fund. Is that right?
Records management.
Okay. She wasn't here last, last, last meeting, and we weren't really clear. So that is within the budget. Our office will be paying the five thousand dollar maintenance fee, so that is, the cost is covered within the budget with the county clerk and our office. So we are asking for approval of the carpool data management system for the county's office.
Can I, Commissioner, to entertain a motion on general item number seven?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the carpool solutions interface contract.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Keen, second by Commissioner Martin. Any other discussion regarding the general item number seven? You're none, I'll call for the vote, all who's opposed, say aye.
Aye.
All who's against me, ayes and a noes. Motion passes. Move to general item number eight, we have Ms. Allison Perret, six A and M Everlife Extension, discuss taking action on four-H county council member presenting two thousand and twenty-five four-H week, October fifth through eleven of two thousand and twenty-five proclamation.
Yes. Good morning. So this morning, I have a couple county council officers with me for the reading of the National Four-H Week Proclamation, which is always the first full week in October. National Four-H Week is not just about promoting the organization, but also they have to come up and host a countywide community service project. So this year, they are doing a food drive, and they're even having a contest among all of the different clubs to try to maximize donations, and then all of those canned goods would be donated to all the local food pantries across the county. So I'm going to let them introduce themselves, and then our president's going to read the proclamation.
Hello, I'm Sean Dukas. I am the Wilson County Four-H Council Treasurer.
My name's Emma Aldrich. I'm the second vice president of county council.
Hello, I'm Connor Hiasky, and I'm the president of the county council. The National Four-H Week Proclamation, whereas this year's National Four-H Week theme, Beyond Ready, reminds us that four-H is building a ready generation in a world of change and equips young people with skills for the future while meeting them where they are today. And whereas four-H is America's largest youth development organization, supporting six million youth across the country. And whereas four-H programs are delivered by the Cooperative Extension System, a community of more than one hundred public land-grant colleges and universities across the nation that provides experience for young people to learn, learn by doing. And whereas four-H is in every city and county in the United States and helps six million youth become engaged, successful, and independent. And whereas four-H connects young people and adults to their communities, preparing them for work and life through experiential and inquiry-based learning while providing emerging research for positive youth development. And whereas expanding from its strong agricultural roots, four-H helps young people explore the world around them and grow into productive adults. And whereas supporting future leaders in science, agriculture, and community leadership is an important imperative for the U.S. Department of Agriculture, National Institute of Food and Agriculture, four-H program. And now therefore, we, Wilson County Commissioners Court, do hereby proclaim October fifth through eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, as National Four-H Week throughout Florisville, Texas, and encourage all our citizens to recognize four-H for the significant impact it has made and continues to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead for a lifetime.
I'll make a motion to accept the four-H proclamation for October fifth through the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
Sure.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Keen. Any other discussion regarding the general item number eight? You're none, I call for the vote, all who's opposed, say aye.
Aye.
All who's against me, ayes and a noes. Motion passes. We accept the proclamation.
Thank you.
Bring it up.
What?
His gold star.
Oh, okay. Yes, sir.
Not part of the program, but he achieved one of the most excellent awards that you can get in four-H being the Gold Star Award, and so he knows and his family knows I'm not going to pass up the opportunity.
And this is birthday.
Mom pulled one over on EPA.
General item number nine, we have a report here on our fifth and third officer, discussing only on two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, end of fiscal, for few, few fiscal years, for few decline.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. So we're here to finish the year off with our last fourth quarter, end of the year report. So our mission, I never want to skip this part, it might, there might be somebody new hearing out and online, so bridging the gap between military service members, veterans, and dependent benefits to maximize entitlements, the type of service we cover is VA compensation, pension, appeals, survivors' benefits, education, burial benefits, state and other local entitlements. Next slide, please. So this is what we have left from last fiscal year, still pending, twenty-three, twenty-four. As of right now, we only have eight pending, and five hundred and fifty-four have been closed. This is last fiscal year. I always kept this as we have some things that are decided and get rolled on into the current fiscal year, which we'll have still next year as well. Constituents assisted by precincts, so these are constituents that resulted in some type of filing of a claim. Florisville is now kind of leading a lot more than Laverne area, or precinct three, should I say? Precinct two to precinct three, and precinct four, and one, I mean, yeah, four and one are still consistently around the same numbers for that, but five hundred and twenty-three constituents assisted that resulted in some type of action of claim. Number of forms we've done, again, it's color-coded by precinct. I'll let you kind of see that, but the overall number is seven hundred and eighty-nine. And claims filed, two thousand two hundred and seventy-three claims had been filed in this fiscal year. We had a change in our, our program as of today. Mrs. Redmond is a spouse of a veteran. She wasn't able to make it today. Her, she had a loss of a family member over the weekend, so she called us this morning, left us a message, and said she wasn't going to be able to make it. I just want to cover the, the scenario with Mrs. Redmond. I met Mr. Redmond early December of twenty-four and filed his claims, and in the process, he became very ill. He's been hospitalized for the last eight, eight months. And one service I want to highlight is many service members start a process with our office and may become ill or something happens in their personal life. Spouses can step in and continue that process with the Veterans Service Office, and I want to make sure that they are, they know about that. So Mrs. Redmond and I were able to connect and finish the process and get these claims filed, and now this is helping the veteran in the process since he's been in the hospital. But that's just quick synopsis of this, this constituents scenario. But in replacement, I do have Mrs. Sandy Yao from Frank DeHeda Veterans Home, just to give a little bit on our impact and what we've been doing at the veterans' home. Mrs. Yao?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Sandy Yao. I'm the admissions coordinator at the Frank M. DeHeda Texas State Veterans Home. Currently, we have a hundred and fifty-five veterans and five spouses of veterans. Ray is in our office once a month, where we set him up in office where veterans, families, spouses can come and apply for benefits, whether it's aid and attendance, service connection, or maybe just getting their foot in the VA. It's a great benefit to have him there, the impact that he puts in the, not only in our community, but in the community as a whole in Wilson County. The location, the new location here at the corner is a huge, huge benefit. We would hear veterans saying, we just, you know, just can't make it with the traffic and stuff where he was formerly at. Ray's office and Ray go beyond the call of duty in reaching out to shut in veterans that cannot come to the office. This is a great benefit for our veterans. We have a lot of veterans in Wilson County that need services or need help. There's so many benefits that veterans have that they don't know that they're entitled to. So I thank you for allowing him to do what he has and relocating the office. It is a big, big, big impact, and if you'd ever like to come for a tour to our community, I welcome you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Yao. Okay, so we got a new and returning and open and closed. So this number restarts every fiscal year as a, the first time a veteran comes to our office within that fiscal year. So overall, we have five hundred and twenty-two. Seventy-four of those have been returning, whether it be appeals or for new claims, and four hundred and forty-eight have been new. Pending claims as of this fiscal year, open, we have two hundred and forty-nine. So these are thing, two hundred and forty-nine that are going to be rolling into next fiscal year as far as decisions, and two hundred and seventy-five. I will say that a lot of claims I haven't, wasn't able to get to as far as documenting the, the end result. I'm sure we have more closed. We just, this past fiscal year was very busy, and that's a good thing. Next slide, please. Contacts resulted in action, four hundred and one by appointments, three hundred and thirty-two emails, four by phone, six, as we do handle some phones remotely, which I'll cover here shortly, and walk-ins, fifty-nine. So we don't, we don't advertise a, a walk-in hours. We just kind of try to do it a little bit more strategically by appointment only, but at times, there's a late, last-minute cancel, and somebody walks in, and we'll handle those cases. Oh, back, go back to the last slide, please. Okay. Interactions from VetPro. So we've had two thousand and eleven interactions by phone. Again, these are just interactions, overall questions, services, referrals, not just filing of claims. Emails, seven hundred and forty. In person, one thousand thirty-two. Emails, seven hundred and forty, in person, one thousand thirty-two, faxes, five, and unspecified is three hundred and thirty-five. Unspecified again is when I have to document, review a file when the veteran is not there, it is still something that takes work and we make sure that we track that. Overall total, our office provided some type of assistance to a constituent, constituent four thousand one hundred and forty-three times in this fiscal year. Next, we have veteran, a veteran Jerika, which is his last name, his testimonial by his son, Dr. Scott Jerika. Mr. Jerika has, I honestly have not met him in person, but I've met his son in person. This is the second time we've met besides Zoom. And the reason why I wanted to bring Mr. Jerika's, Veteran Jerika's case up is because our office is able to work remotely, really anywhere. And through that is because of our IT department that has supported us, you know, making that possible. And we're able to collaborate, as long as we can transfer documents and get signatures electronically, we can work in that capacity. And I'm really proud of that because not only can we do things in person, but we can also handle everything with no issue remotely. And in Mr. Jerika's case, elderly veteran living alone in Wilson County, his son actually lives in Austin, made the trip down here to provide his testimony in person. We submitted the required documentation. As a spouse can take representation for a veteran while the veteran's living, so can a child of a veteran. And I say child, but it can be somebody grown, of course, over the eight years of eighteen. And Mr. Doc, or Dr. Scott Jerika and I have been able to do that. We worked remotely while in Austin, working through Zoom and working through our schedules and making things happen. And the end result ultimately led in a hundred percent with two years of back pay. So this is something that we've kind of been going at it, you know, and a lot of veterans get a no and, and kind of just leave it at that. And sometimes I, I like to inform them, it just takes consistency and as long as we're addressing things differently, citing law, and that is the way we win our cases. I'm not going to go over as to the monetary value, but I will say it's a, you know, a six-figure back pay. And that's just, just one of multiple ones that we've had this year. So without further ado, Dr. Scott Jerika, please.
Judge, Commissioners, I've never done this, so I'm not going to take long, but I cannot thank Ray enough for this. When he asked me to come to talk, it's a couple of months ago, so I was like, bar none, I'll come and do this. My dad, good, good human being, eighty-three years old now, and just, it's complicated to deal with the, the VA. And, you know, anytime I've dealt with patients, anybody's like, you know, buckle up, this is going to be a, it's, it's going to be a mess for you. Ray didn't do that. Ray treated my dad like his own dad. And I can't thank him enough for it. He, he made things simple, he made things easier, consistent. The Zoom thing was great. I was being in my office and we'd have something and he, I still don't even know what it was, but it was some cool little, little device. They go to this app, click a number, sign it, and we'll submit it. And I was like, this is fantastic. I mean, so again, I can't say enough how, how helpful he's been. Whether any of you or if you have family members here in Wilson County that have veterans, I, I pray he never leaves. He, I, I just, I simply cannot thank him enough for what he has done for my dad. There, there's no way, there's no way this would have happened without him. It was, he was, he was consistent, he, as soon as something happened, he said, oh, well, we're just going to do this or we're going to do it this way. He, he answered questions before they even, it even came up. So, anyway, I thank you again.
Judge and Commissioners, I, I bring these testimonials to the court for many reasons, but I see the tears before, I see the tears after, I get the hugs, I get the gratitude. But ultimately, because of you guys, we're able to do this work. So I, I, I hope and see that you guys can relate and it, it tears at your heart because Wilson County is doing a huge impact. In the last few years, we have grown with your support in manpower and spacing. And I just want to say thank you for that and thank you for that support. And I know we will continue to work together to reach the veterans in our community. So return on investment, total for fiscal year, year to date, twenty-four, twenty-five. In my last report, I, I think we calculated and I didn't want to over, over commit. And I think it was at three point two or after doing our reporting. Again, I know we're, we're missing a lot already, but we hit four million. I thought that was a fair place to kind of stop, and I was pretty overwhelmed in trying to document this, this monetary value. But four million, thirty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-three cents. That is about almost half more than last fiscal year. I think we're at like two point three million within our first year. And that first year was a trial, it was trying to figure out what is the need and then trying to implement some new policies and procedures on how to service this county specifically. So we exceeded our department budget this fiscal year by three thousand one hundred and eighty-seven percent. Our target goal for this fiscal year that I put in place last September was at one point five million. So that was the goal I was trying to reach as it's a one-person filing claims. And I thought that was a, a fair goal, I didn't know where we would, would be at. So we completed that goal and we exceeded by two hundred and sixty-nine percent. One thing I want to talk about really quick is the overall total, since I've taken the department, Veterans Department over, would be six million, and this is not on the slide, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. And it's just two years with one year of, of our procedures and policies. Now, our dynamics since August of twenty-three have been changing, you know, with personnel and, you know, how our office is, is, is working. We haven't had something consistent, so I look forward to having something more consistent within our, our manpower. That way we can have a, a better projections for the future. One thing I want to talk about too about on the return on investment, I think this is great. I mean, one of the testimonials just for today, you know, a six-figure back pay for a veteran. That's amazing for the veteran and his family, amazing. But how does this impact us as a community? And I want to shed light on the economic impact in the county this does, the value that it brings. Veterans are buying homes here in Wilson County. Veterans are supporting local businesses here in Wilson County. Veterans are starting businesses in Wilson County with that income that is now coming into their pockets. So I just want to shed light on that and the importance of our services not only impacting veterans and their families, but the community as a whole. So projections for next, or back, backside, sorry, for next fiscal year. So we're trying to do constituents serving five hundred. This is resulting in action, I think the first were around five hundred and then we came down just under five hundred. So I think consistently five hundred is, is a good number as there's only one service officer providing claims assistance for that. Total constituents served, I put two thousand five hundred. As dynamics are changing in the office and, and we're trying to, you know, again, we don't have something consistent in the last two years, but we're still working with what we have. And the ROI in the monetary value, I'm putting it up from one point five to two million. We've had to, you know, come, cut back on the throttle a little bit in the beginning of this year. Bringing on a new program for the grant has taken a lot more on my area where I have to provide and make sure that everything's in place so we can roll this out, which I want to shed a little bit of light on that. Grant, we've had our first person successfully get paid three utility bills. We have quite a lot of applications still pending and, and we wanted to get more feedback from the Texas Veterans Commission as to moving forward on, on processing this. And we got that already and we're excited to continue to assist veterans in financial capacity. Next slide, please. So goals, challenges, and vision, again emphasizing on Willco GY six, so Wilson County got your six, meaning we got your back for financial assistance. Again, this is a, this is not a, a monetary-based program. And I want to make sure the public hears that because sometimes we just need a, a slight assistance. You know, with the holidays coming, people are, are, you know, not everything's about gifts, but sometimes that's a good thing to provide. And if we can help them in some type of utilities or mortgage or funeral expenses, maybe that can allow them some relief in other areas. Implement ongoing training and procedures to better manage. Again, with dynamics changing, we're constantly having to just change things, our planning and how we do business with our new office, with our, our personnel dynamics, now bringing on a full-time, a grant person under the grant, as well as our part-time person, still part-time. You know, we're just managing those things as they come and, and I'll be reporting as, as those dynamics are affected. So branding, marketing, Veterans Department, I think we've been doing a really good job. Our, our following on our social media has increased. We have a constant, a lot of interactions within our posts and our events. It's not just things our office does, but our partners are doing things happening in the community, even with Wilson County. And we're just constantly just showing and thriving in the, the social media and marketing area. One thing I want to talk about is our partnerships, I didn't put it on our goals, but when I first came to Wilson County as an employee, because I've lived here, I saw there's a lot of veteran organizations that do great things here already. But I didn't see that they collaborated. So we put together the Wilson County Veterans Coalition and we didn't create a board, there's no president. We wanted to make sure that this is something that those organizations want to be a part of. And we're not, you know, making them, putting them in a box and making them be a part of us, this is something they want to do. And with that, the Wilson County Coalition has put on their first event. And that was, if you missed it, the, the comedy show, you know, September's Mental Health Awareness Month. And we wanted to make sure that, or not make sure, but one of the best ways to address mental health is through laughter. And we did that, we brought on three veteran comedians and we had a comedy show at the Show Barn. We had just under a hundred people show up. I want to thank the Sheriff's Office for supporting us for that event. I think a couple of times I was, I was walking through the back when the sheriff on, on duty was not taking his rounds, he was belly laughing. So it was great, it was a great environment. This event of that magnitude is not just for veterans. We had business owners, we have people coming from out of Wilson County to Wilson County for this event. So it was just something great to see, to experience. And I, I look forward to what the coalition has become and what they're going to do in the future. But those partnerships are just important enough for our office. Challenges, canceled and scheduled appointments. So this past, I would say within the last six months, not just the fiscal year. As I reported in our, our last presentation, we had a part-time employee that was able to flex some hours to work more than a part-time hours. And with that, I mean, we've had nine, now only nine canceled appointments because that person was able to call them a couple of days before or a day before, remind them, hey, you have an appointment, you know, are you going to be able to make it? You know, being proactive, you know, as to, because we are three months in advance already scheduled. So when you have a, an appointment three months in advance and, you know, you don't get a, an alert or anything like that, it's harder to remember to attend that appointment. So that's something we're going to miss this, the rest of this, starting of the fiscal year. And, but that's, that number has drastically dropped. I think the most was around thirty-five and the least was around twenty-two or twenty-five. So now we're down to nine for this last fiscal year. Personnel dynamics, as I've been emphasizing, is constantly changing. We appreciate the support, we appreciate the growth within our department and we just want to say thank you for that. Training certification completed by Natalie How, Howarth. So she is now certified as she has a year to certify. She has completed that under the year, I, I would say under the first four months she was able to do that. And this is just a lot of collaboration, seeing how our office works and training within our department. So our vision, self, self-sustaining streamlined Veterans Department, adequate department to service growing veteran population. And the department's ability to offer more timely and accessible resources, Willco GY six is addressing a lot of those resources. I was at a event where I got to receive, and I should have brought it today, we have a big check, you know, the two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar check and it's sitting in my office. And when I went to go receive that check, I was able to, you know, talk about our services and how there ain't many veteran services in Wilson County. But with this grant, it allows us more services to provide. So with the constituents we see resulting in action, I expect that to be increased. We're shooting for a hundred and fifty constituents being helped through the grant itself. One last thing, because that is the end of my presentation, but at the comedy show, we also had the Vets With Vets calendar. This is like two years in the making, really because of specific sponsorships that we receive. We just want to appreciate those sponsorships and say thank you, this was able to happen. So this is the Vets With Vets, Veterans With Corvettes, veterans that live in Wilson County. We partnered them up with a Corvette, we captured them. As you can see, we have the Laverne Memorial, Florisville Memorial, and I didn't want to miss, of course, our Wilson County courthouse on here. And we have just people from Wilson County veterans partnered on there. We put them in a calendar and this is something that can be purchased through a nonprofit, one of our partners. And once verified, you can pick up the calendar from our office. So you can contact Coffee Cars and Veterans or you can contact our office on how to get one. But we dedicated this calendar to Mrs. Joanne Hale, which was a, she was at the Frank DeHeda Veterans Home. I got to help Mrs. Hale actually file her claims, sadly she passed in the process. We wanted to capture her on here and dedicate our first calendar because we will start another one for next year, January, start looking for sponsorships. She joined the service when women were not allowed to join the service. So she joined the Army Women's Corps. And we just wanted to capture her and, and have something that they can remember her by. They are twenty-five dollars if interested. And with that, I want to say thank you guys and that's the end of my presentation. Good question. So there is, with, with tinnitus, there's other things that are changing, but just to address tinnitus itself. So right now, currently tinnitus is ringing in the ear and hearing loss is obviously just hearing loss. They currently have them as separate ratings, but I, I'm not sure what date or if it's December. At some point, they want to combine it because before veterans can have hearing loss and get a zero percent and veterans would be kind of upset, like, how is it possible the VA will give me hearing aids and give me a zero percent? And the criteria to be compensated for hearing loss is slightly higher than the criteria to just be given hearing aids itself for healthcare purposes. But to your question, Judge, they're just going to combine tinnitus and hearing loss together. So you'll never, you'll no longer see zero percents for hearing loss and you'll now see just ten percents typically if they have tinnitus. And hearing loss can be a zero percent, but with tinnitus would be ten. Even when it changes, they're still allowed tinnitus under all that. So there's no rush for it, it's just, I think, people talking, you can get it before or after. It's not something that will be affected, it's just now combined together. So I used to, I used to say that every veteran shoots weapons, right? And until I started running to veterans, I never shot a weapon in service back then, currently. And I was, I didn't know that was a possibility, but I do know that every veteran is, is exposed to noise in some fashion. So whatever their job is, I tailor noise exposure to that because typically everybody has it, even the cook. At some point, it's somewhere around noise, the, the person in the engine room. At some point, it's somewhere around noise, the person in the engine room on the flight deck, you know, it's not just the rifleman in combat itself. Thank you.
So with this, what I know of it is kind of what we've been going through with our security. And the reason we have employee badging is if anything comes up, we as employees of Wilson County can be identified with a badge. Your road and bridge crews will have it. They can put it in their wallets or whatever, just different, different ways to identify. And so whenever they're in the courthouse, we know who our employees are as well because we've got a lot of employees that are not in the courthouse as well. So any type of emergency, whenever we're at the E O C or doing anything like that, we can, we can be identified. Whenever y'all did COVID at the show barn for those years, I wasn't, I wasn't here at that time, but you can identify if we ever have another crisis with something like that. You know who your, who these individuals are. That's the whole purpose of bringing back the badging. We've had it in the past, we're bringing it back. What we do ask is the elected and/or the head of the offices make your employees badges now. We can get a link out, Ms. Stafford and H R can send a link out. So you can start putting all your information in there, put a picture in there, and then Ms. Stafford can print those badges for us, okay, at the E O C. On top of that, new employees will, whenever they join Wilson County, as an employee, H R will do most of that and get those badges made as well, right? So that's where we're going with all this. Ms. Stafford, did I say anything wrong? I have not read through it all. I looked at it. I don't, I don't like putting the onus on the employee for providing the picture, especially the field crews. I mean, they have no access to computers. We're going to have to figure some, some of this stuff out. Yeah, we need to figure out, yeah, because we would have to be the ones that say you need to charge them for it or not. I mean, you know, there could be instances if we're out in a hurricane or something that they lose it. I don't, I'm not going to hold somebody responsible in that scenario if they're out trying to clear a road or something, that their badge got snagged and they lost it. I don't think they should have to pay for it. So I, I think there's a little bit of work that needs to be done here.
So I'm not sure when the policy was written. I think Ms. Huron and Jaylen, you didn't? Yeah, so I'm not sure we can make those tweaks. I know we discussed on my side, replacement badges, not necessarily for all the employees, but anybody that's going to have H I D badges. Those are eight dollars a badge and so if we provide one to the employee, that's great, but if they lose it, then I would think the employee should be responsible for replacing it because those badges are expensive. The normal badges, they are very cheap. I have a lot of those, so that's not a problem. It's just, I believe District Court's going to H I D badges fairly soon, so anybody that's going to be doing that, access control card, the sheriffs, E O C, those are expensive. So that's kind of where the cost was coming from. Taking of the pictures, actually, we can help accommodate that. I actually do it for my cell phone. I have a digital camera and it's harder to get the correct ratio on the picture to get onto your badge. So really just somebody taking it with their cell phone. If y'all want to send them to my office or Jaylen's, it's going to be cumbersome in the beginning, but after we get everybody badged, it shouldn't be a problem. The big portion of this is the mass notification. We've been using the system for seventeen, eighteen years in place before I started here with Ms. Hoshek. But we can, we need to set this up for county employees. So if the judge decides it's a bad weather day and we need to close, it's not left on H R and the judge's assistant to make all of these phone calls. It's, I can do it, the judge's office can do it, Jaylen can do it through the app on our phones. It will go email and text message to let people know. Or if we do have another lockdown like we did after the Sutherland Springs incident when the Vice President came, it's not them trying to call everybody. It's one text, one email, and it goes out to all county employees. So the information needs to be that they're, when they put their email in, it should be the county email, but when they put their cell phone in, it needs to be whatever they have with them, or they're not going to get those vital notifications that the judge sends out. So, and all of this is already in place. We've had it in place for, like I said, fifteen years or so. So it's just a matter of implementing it and getting it off the ground, making changes to the policy. That's, shouldn't be a problem either. I'm sure Jaylen can accommodate that.
Because the other thing is, is how, how does an employee, how does he know what to do that he's up to date in the registration system?
I, I would assume they would let their employer know or their department head know. I have, I can't see people's login information, but I have a button I can click to send it out. So what I've been doing is-
Well, but I'm saying is, I don't have it. None of my employees have it right now.
You have no employees on there, so they would have to register, but when I went in-
Well, but that's what I'm saying. How, how do they do that?
I, you would, they would tell you, you would tell me, hey, Joe doesn't know his password, forgot his password, and then I can send a link. Jaylen will have the same access. It's not just coming through me. Jaylen and the county judge's assistant will have it. So it's just a matter of reminding people. So I actually think I got anybody that's already in the system updated and corrected and everybody in the appropriate departments, because we've had some employees changing departments. So anybody that's already registered, I've gotten them straightened out. So all we have to do is, you know, Mr. Martin, you can call and go, I don't remember my password. I hit a button. I can't see it, but it sends you an email.
It remembers for you, yeah.
Yeah, so it will tell you.
So, and then back to the badging. So we're doing, all employees will have badging for I D purposes. So if we're, if we're going to go the trouble to write a policy for that, then it needs to include the badging or the access badge that's required to get in, say the District Court building or here or your office or whatever, because that's different from the standpoint of, though, there is a significant cost to those badges and I understand that. So that needs to be added to the badging. I won't say, because I mean, you could incorporate all that into one badge too. Now, is that badge going to have their I D on it or their picture and everything, right?
My badge printer allows for the thickness of the card, so I just changed the thickness from the thinner ones to the H I D and it basically prints both sides. And the backside does have a Q R code. So if you're out of county and somebody's like, what are you doing here? Because it's an emergent response, it's got a Q R code and it will pull up all of the validity of that badge. So. But yeah, when Jaylen is here, she can make those corrections.
All right, so I went through the TARP program. I turped one of my maintainers. And it's been accepted. So we've talked to R D O about getting a new maintainer. They have gotten us one. We went through government capital to actually go through and finance this and we have a resolution to adopt.
We do. So the TARP program is going to reimburse us, I believe it's two-hundred-and-four-thousand dollars. And that will be reimbursed to us after we purchase the equipment and destruction of the old equipment. We've gone through the TARP program before, if you remember, through, for the Volkswagen trucks that you guys purchased a few years ago. So because we're financing through government capital, they do require a resolution. So Judge, I'll read the resolution now. A resolution regarding a contract for the purpose of financing a loader. Whereas Wilson County, the county desires to enter into that certain finance contract by and between the issuer and Government Capital Corporation for the purchase of financing a loader. Whereas the county desires to designate this finance contract as a qualified tax-exempt obligation of the county for the purpose, purposes of Section 265 B three of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended. Whereas the county desires to designate the county judge or the county judge designate as an authorized signer of the finance contract. Now therefore be it resolved by Wilson County, Section one, that the Wilson County, that Wilson County will enter a finance contract with G C C, Government Capital Corporation, for the purpose of financing a loader. Section two, that the finance contract by and between Wilson County and G C C is designated by the issuer as a qualified tax-exempt obligation for the purposes of Section 265 B three of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended. Section three, that Wilson County appoints the county judge or the county judges designate as the authorized signer of the finance contract by and between Wilson County and G C C, as well as any other ancillary exhibit, certificate, or documentation needed for the contract. And section four, that should the need arise, if applicable, Wilson County will use loan proceeds for reimbursement of expenditures related to the property within the meaning of Treasury Regulation one dot one five oh dash two as promulgated under the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended. And then it reads that this resolution has been passed upon motion made by and seconded by with a vote and the effective date. And just so that you know, Commissioner King opted for four annual payments, I believe?
That was five. No, it was four.
I think it was four. And the way this financing will work is Government Capital wrote the finance contract so that when we get the two-hundred-and-four-thousand-dollar reimbursement through the TARP program, we will actually turn around and utilize that money to make the first annual payment, which won't be due until a year from the time we get funded. So the way Government Capital's financing works is they actually fund the entire purchase price to the county. So we will get the total amount issued in payment to us, that'll get sent to the treasurer's office, and then we will turn around and send the, the payment to the dealer. And then for, in full, that property then becomes ours and then we use the two-hundred-and-four-thousand-dollar reimbursement to make the first payment a year from the day to finance, funding.
It's four payments total.
Another question I had is, the resolution says loader, the agenda item says maintainer. So.
It's a maintainer, not a loader.
Yeah, so that is-
That needs to be corrected. So. I want to make a motion to approve the resolution between Wilson County and Government Capital to purchase a seven-seventy John Deere maintainer with the corrections on the resolution.
Yes.
Agenda item number twelve, we have right of review, our county attorney discussing taking action on the following official year twenty-sixth, the Homeland Security Program with the Office of the Governor and the Sheriff's Department.
Yes, so we were just notified last week, well, actually, the grant opened up on September the eleventh. This is through the Office of the Governor and funneled through A C O G. The grant deadline is October the tenth. There is no matching requirement from the county. The application must support border crisis response and enforcement. Some of the eligible areas are staffing, training, overtime, facility upgrades, et cetera. I did send the sheriff, the, all of the program information to allow him to review it to determine whether or not this was something that he wanted us to pursue because the deadline is October the tenth to submit the application. This is through the Office of Governor where we currently have our Operation Lone Star grant as well. And so I asked the sheriff to review it to let us know by today so that we would know how we're going to proceed and he opted to proceed. So I asked him if he could speak to that, to explain to the court what it was, what it will be that we will be applying for.
Because, because of the fact that it does mirror the O L S grant quite a bit and the fact that the legislature required sheriff's office to enter into the two-eight-seven-G with the immigration ICE. We may need more personnel to fulfill that and this grant is what I would put forth to ask for another person just for that purpose, is to have that person that would be able to fulfill any requirements ICE may have of us. And I'm going to need to do that anyway. So this will give me the person. I'd be basically granting another personnel and the equipment in order to function at position.
It won't open up, I believe the, let's see.
Deadline's the tenth of October. Probably won't open until early next year.
Let's see. The funding is, earliest project start date would be January of twenty-six. So it, it- If, if we were awarded the grant, I would, I would create another fund just like I have for Operation Lone Star. The sheriff would know that any person that he hires would be one-hundred percent grant-funded and so should the grant funding go away after year one, then the court would have to make a decision as to whether or not the general fund would assume that expense or the department just goes away. The, it says projects selected for funding must begin between January one, twenty-twenty-six and March one, twenty-twenty-six and expires on or before December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven. And it just says that project periods should be structured so that projects that include grant-funded salaries and/or annual recurring costs do not overlap with the project periods of previous or future grant awards with the same cost. So basically, it does state that any grant-funded salaries must be in a twelve- or twenty-four-month grant cycle performance period. And the minimum amount requested is ten thousand. There is no maximum amount that we requested. And the Public Safety Office expects the funding amount for the state Homeland Security Program statewide is two-point-six million dollars. So, you know, there, there's a high, high chance that we could get the funding for this. And I spoke with, or advised Kayla and the sheriff that rather than us having to pay somebody to write the application, I think between the sheriff and I, if he can get me the, the details of what he, how much he wants to pay, the hours and so forth, between Kayla and I, we can write the narrative for it because we're familiar with O L S, so we're able to put together something like that. And I think we can be able to submit it by October tenth. Kayla, if you're listening, I'm sorry.
Actually, actually, we have the numbers already today to give to Kayla. I think there may be an option in there to request a two-year grant because it does have for twenty-four months. And I'm thinking to go ahead and go for the two years straight out. That way we don't have to do this again. It mirrors O L S. I think we can write it just basically just like- I think we can write it just basically, just like we have the OLS grant. Just change a few items in there and I think it'll work. It'll actually be fairly easy. Kayla.
Yeah, I know, Kayla.
Got a question.
Yeah, I mean, Kayla would be responsible for the reporting that she does very well with Collins for OLS. So whoever the sheriff puts over this grant, you know, that we would mirror the same process and make sure that all of the grant reporting gets done.
You're calling for the would that make the motion that came for two years, correct?
Then I would, I would request that we could, we could look at applying for, for a two-year grant.
It won't hurt anything, let's get it out.
Yeah, I.
What is the amount we're talking about?
I, I don't know yet, not.
Not less than ten thousand and they don't put a cap on it.
Right.
So two years, we're probably looking at.
Well, but you're talking about one personnel salary, you, plus expenses, whatever.
You're looking at probably about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, somewhere in that ballpark, I would think.
Cause this is covering everything, not just the person, but.
I, I would have to have the vehicle and the equipment and everything on this grant in order to supply that to that person. So yes, I'm, I'm gonna be putting it all in that grant application.
And the only thing I need to confirm, I know Sheriff mentioned for two years. I don't know if typically with the Office of Governor, just like Operation Lone Star, the grant cycle is for twelve months and then we resubmit or re, renew for another twelve months at the end of the grant cycle. So I haven't gone through there. So I would, in your motion, request that you just give approval to apply for the grant and then we will determine whether or not the grant period is for one year or two years. We just need the approval to, to move forward with the application.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, apply for the twenty twenty-six, uh, the FY twenty-six State Homeland Security Program through the officer, Officer of the Government, Governor, for the Sheriff's Department so we can get that moving forward.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Martin. Any other discussion regarding agenda item number four? You're now all for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, against, nay? Ice have a motion passed.
Thank you.
Agenda item number thirteen, we have the Toronto Committee and Director, thirteen A, non-standard plat variance, one. County Road three four two, fourteen seventy-four, non-standard plat.
Yes, good morning. Mr. Davenport was in attendance at our review committee to represent this split, proposed split of property. He currently owns sixteen acres off of County Road three forty-two and it was proposing to take out a one acre truck. Uh, it did get a favorable recommendation from our review committee. And like always, he supplied his utility letter so he has availability for both Phelps and, I believe, SS, SS Water.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for thirteen D, one. I'll make a motion to approve the non-standard plat for County Road three four two, fourteen seventy-four.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Third, all opposed, seconded by Commissioner Thirteen. Any other discussion on thirteen eighty-one? You're now all for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, against, nay?
Abstain.
One extension. I motion pass. Remove to thirteen eight two, County Road one sixty-three, track eight, non-standard plat, do you mean?
Yes, the Win, uh, Mr. Taylor Win proposes to split a current two point seven eight track into two tracks of one point three nine. This was represented by Mr. Laskowski from Rakowitz and he is in attendance here in case you have any questions. Uh, as always, they did produce their utility letters from Phelps and from Oak Hills stating that there is availability to both lots. And this also received a favorable recommendation from our review committee.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for thirteen eight two.
Like I said, Mr. Laskowski from Rakowitz Engineering is here in case there's any questions on the split of this property.
Gary, you all right with this?
I, I, I don't, I don't approve of any of our variances. So I, I always abstain, so I'm not gonna make a motion. I'm not gonna vote for it.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the non-standard plat for County Road one sixty-three, track eight.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Thirteen, seconded by Commissioner Third. Any other discussion regarding your community? You're now all for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, against, nay?
Abstain.
Got a, so the, the motion passes. Thirteen D, utility permit one, permit eight twenty, SS Water precinct three, County Road three thirty-three, review and approval.
Yes, this is from SS Water in precinct number three. This information has been provided to Commissioner Perdola to review beforehand. They are proposing a two-inch road bore under County Road three thirty-three.
I have expected this, sorry. Motion to approve, third, that we, SS Water, County Road three thirty-three, service. Motion made by Commissioner Third, all opposed, seconded by Commissioner Eighty. Any other discussion regarding this item, thirteen D one? You're now all for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, against, nay? Ice have a motion passes. Remove to thirteen D two, permit eight twenty-one, Three Oaks, precinct two, County Road two oh one, three twenty-one, review and approval.
Yes, this is located, sorry, in precinct two. Information also has been provided to Commissioner King. Uh, they propose a bore, uh, under County Road two oh one.
So I've talked to Three Oaks. I've been out there, looked at this, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve permit eight twenty-one for Three Oaks, precinct two, County Road two oh one, three twenty-one.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Thirteen, seconded by Commissioner Thirdola. Any other discussion regarding thirteen D two?
I, I would recommend that you make sure that their three foot clearance is below the bottom of the bar ditch.
I believe this one does have it on their drawing is, was that?
Well, they're kinda showing it from the road and I don't know how deep the ditches are there, but certainly wanna make sure that you got plenty of room if you need to run your blade through that ditch, that you're not gonna hit their water line.
Talking to Three Oaks, yes, uh, they're going three foot below the bar ditch.
Any other discussion on three D two? You're now all for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, against, nay? Ice have a motion passes. We go to thirteen C, boiling gas salt water line, C one, permit one sixty-four, Warwood, Ardness, precinct two, County Road two oh seven, review and approval.
Uh, this information was provided to Commissioner King. This is also in his precinct. They are proposing to bore, uh, under County Road two, two oh seven.
So I've been to, if I can, I'd put these together. I've been to both these sites since it's right there on two oh five and two oh seven. I've talked to Warwick about this as well. So I would like to approve permit one six four and one six five for County Road two oh seven and two oh five for the salt water line, oil gas salt water line.
Second. Okay, Commissioner King made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Both C one, thirteen C one and two, permit one sixty-five, Warwood, Ardness, precinct two, County Road two oh seven, is included. Any other discussion regarding the, the, you're now all for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, against, nay? Ice have a motion passes. Thirteen D, one, permit one fourteen, Petrich Technology, precinct two, County Road two oh five, two oh seven, information not acting required.
This is just for information only for the public to let them know that there will be a temporary water line going beneath those county roads. Uh, this information was also provided to Commissioner King so he could review the sites before, uh, the, the line went in and commenced.
Agenda item number, you know, I'm here.
Yeah.
Are you aware, we just found out, and just saw your information.
Mm-hmm.
Hello? In our classes this week, uh, this last week, uh, for the West Conference, Western Conference, for Commissioner Judd's, there was a deal promoted by Senator Beckmore that would allow an individual private company to come in and oversee a permit for a county to hold the rights. Am I correct, Commissioner, did you hear that?
Yeah, uh, that, that's been going on for a while. Um, but yeah, it was to allow developers to hire their own engineer, but it didn't pass. But it's just, it's, it's sitting, it's sitting out there.
As far as the review process, so it doesn't go through county review? I do know that there's a lot of stuff going through legislative right now trying to take power away from the county when it comes to development. Uh, like I said, we did, we contributed to one of the lobbyists from the county side. I, I did submit some paperwork letting them know why that would not be in favor of the community. Uh, when the county reviews stuff like that, we're looking out for the public, the community. Uh, it's a different point of view when a developer pays for their own people and approves their own development.
Senator was very persistent. I wanna pay you back, you know, he, he, he made his voice, he made it clear. Are you aware of that?
Yeah, I, I've been aware, I've been made aware and, uh, we can't tell people what to do on their property. But when the, it's gonna be ultimately the county's responsibility when we take on the roads. That's, you know, part of the stuff that I submitted in our essay, or in the essay that I submitted to the lobbyists, letting them know. This ultimately becomes the community's problem. When it's our tax dollars, when it, it's us to take, maintain the roads, then this is why we need some kind of oversight on it. Thank you.
Agenda item number fourteen, we have the District Attorney, County Sheriff, District Act, number nine. Lens Lock and approval for contract, TC's counsel's opinion.
In the renewal this, in the renewal this year for Lens Lock, there's a, uh, request for signature that I'd never seen before. It has something to do with legal.
I haven't seen it, did, did Ms. Nettles get a copy of this?
Yes.
I mean, if she's approved enough, I don't.
She's approved, she's actually the one that sent the request, uh, put it on the agenda for today. But basically all it is, is I'm requesting a signature to, for their legal purposes, to create the contract. It's a renewal. I don't remember seeing this on the last one.
Is it a course signature or just?
Just, uh, just a signature, just yours, Judge, is all it needs. But it, it has something to do with the legal terminology on the leasee lesser, uh, part of the contract. And we missed the last, they've been, they've been after me because it's renewal timing. We missed the last commissioner's court, uh, to get this on here.
What is that?
That, that's all my body warm, body worn cameras and in-car video camera system.
I, I mean, I, I don't really know, I can contact Ms. Nettles real quick, what if you might to make sure. I, I guess this is a, an extension of a lease?
Yes.
For the, uh.
For the equipment. We, we leased it, all the equipment is leased, yes.
And this is correspondence, would be correspondence from the county, um, asking that, um, just some acknowledgements about the, the lease and the agreement. So if she's approved, and I don't, I'll make that, I personally don't.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on agenda item number fourteen.
I'll make a motion to approve renewing the Lens Lock contract and approval of the Lessie's counsel's opinion form.
I can hear what your motion was, sir?
Okay, I said I make a motion to approve the Lens Lock contract and, and approve the Lessie's counsel's opinion form.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Eighty. Any other discussion regarding agenda item number fourteen?
Is there any cost to this or is this just the same thing we've been carrying?
It's the same thing we've been carrying. It's just an additional request they have.
Any other discussion? I agree with you, please.
Yes.
All for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, against, nay? Ice have a motion passes. All right, Sheriff, stay on deck. You have your sheriff's office, you have your board.
I do not have it with me this, I will have it at the next commissioner's court. If you pass that to the judge, please.
Thank you. Agenda item number sixteen, we have Don Losick, Losick Barnett County, tax assessor collector, and her collection monthly report, we all have in there. Agenda item number seventeen, we have Ms. Christina Moose, County Attorney, discuss the act, County Attorney, file that report.
Good morning, and your body will have the treasurer's monthly report ending with October of twenty twenty-five. As usual, the report follows with our checking accounts, the beginning balance, any debits, credits that we did have in August. Leaves us with the ending balance as of August thirty-first. Then our CDs as well. Then followed with our investment accounts. Those accounts, of course, are taxable in Texas class. As well as any debits or credits, I should say, uh, deposits or withdrawals that we've had. Or that correctly. Then followed with any of our outstanding debt, which for the month of August, nothing changed. I did report that in July for one of our, uh, payments for BOKF. That was paid a little earlier. And then followed up with, again, what's called the treasurer's monthly report that lists all the funds. And any debits or credits that are taking place in that fund for just the month of August. So it's leaving you within any balance of that fund for August. If there's any questions, um, you will notice, and I will report that for next month for my quarterly investments. But you'll notice that the interest rate is still staying in that higher four, hasn't dropped yet. Four point five would be the idea, but we have four point three, I'll take it. We're good.
Ms. Christina, I'll entertain a motion on agenda item number seventeen.
I'll make a motion to approve the August treasurer's report.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Aiken. Any other discussion regarding this, Jan item? And now I call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Rules against aye, I have it, motion passed.
Thank you.
Uh, see, this offer is not here for Jan item presentation of paper, with personal change. I can read them all. Okay, in your report, you have President Medina was hired as a maintenance tech for the maintenance department making thirteen ninety-three an hour or thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and nine dollars, twenty cents annually effective September eleven, twenty twenty-five. Emily Rushears was hired as a corrections officer for Sheriff's Department making twenty-three an hour or forty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars, twelve cents annually effective today, September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Sarah Cox was hired as a dispatcher for Sheriff's Department making twenty dollars, ninety cents an hour or forty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, twenty cents annually effective today, September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Jan item number nineteen, we move into Sprecher, Medina County, or discuss take action on County Judge.
Um, Judge, I have a total of one million, four hundred and five thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and four cents. Um, there are some, um, uh, a few, a couple of issues that I want to address to Court Mike Harding for those.
Uh, Judge and Commissioners, I have a few issues I just wanted to bring to the court's attention for some direction, um, on how you would like to proceed. The first item is, we received a notice of a lien filed against Wilson County, uh, for non-payment, um, by Broadus Construction, who is the, uh, general contractor for the Emergency Operations Center. Um, their subcontractor is Applied Thermal Solutions, um, K and R Mechanical Services. According to the lien, it shows that, um, the month in the work, the month that the work was done and materials were furnished for which payment was requested was May of twenty twenty-five, and the amount is five thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars. Um, I did show this to our county attorney's office, Ms. Huron, um, and asked what the best course of action for this is. Um, I just, uh, we received this certified mail last week on Thursday. Um, the reason I bring it to your attention is because there is an invoice in those bills that you've received in the amount of, believe, of four hundred and twenty-four thousand, I believe it's on, uh, the page for the E O C Fund sixteen oh five, uh, payment to Broadus. Um, and so, um, I would like the court's direction on whether or not we move forward with providing that payment to Broadus, um, or if you want me to hold that payment until we determine, um, the status of this notice of lien that was filed.
So, to be clear, we more paid Broadus for that, and Broadus didn't make the payment, what is that?
So, uh, according to the E O C contract, we have been making payments as Broadus will send us. Uh, I, I don't know, Amanda, is Broadus quarterly, or just when they reach a certain point in the schedule of the contract, they provide us invoices that are reviewed by Cindy Stafford, who is our emergency management director. She reviews the invoices and approves for payment, so she did review this one that's in your bills for four hundred, I think, Commissioner, is it four hundred and twenty-four thousand?
Four forty-two.
I'm sorry, four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, I had it backwards. Um, and so they have been, uh, paid for certain parts of the scheduled project. This was just another, um, another payment request from them, you can, uh, see it on there. Now, uh, in full transparency, we have been receiving, uh, over the course of the past several months, um, notices from different vendors, not to this extent of a lien being filed, um, but several notifications from subcontractors who had not been paid. But then that's their responsibility, it's, it's the law that they notify the owner of the project when a bill has not been paid. So what I've been doing is calling those vendors that we receive those notices from, uh, to verify if they've received payment. And at, prior to this one, all had been paid, I don't know if it was just, uh, I don't know what Broadus's, uh, uh, process is in terms of getting their subcontractors paid or what, what that looks like. But prior to this lien, um, everything else had been paid, so. Mm-hmm, it's just a process though, because I have to, I have to call all of those subcontractors to make sure that they've been paid.
The lien is from Applied Mechanical Services, right?
It's right there, sir.
If I may, it, it seems to be somewhat practiced that.
Can you give her the mic?
Delay, I'm sorry, the payment is usually delayed, or they float the, uh, the invoice, and that's why we get the notice and Broadus sends a pain. But once a lien is filed, it places a lien on our property, uh, for non-payment, and we don't know if there's a dispute between Broadus and this vendor. Uh, maybe the materials were substandard, it wasn't done timely, I mean, we don't know what that dispute is. All we know is that it does place a lien, uh, on our property because this individual who provided the service is saying we haven't been paid. And if it gets to that point, it's usually over a period of time of non-payment or ignoring the invoice, so, um, and, and I, I don't know if you have from this particular expense, this particular vendor, like, like money that's being asked to be approved by the court today includes this vendor, or does not?
We wouldn't know, yeah, we wouldn't know that because when Broadus, uh, supplies us with their invoice, it's just based on, they don't provide the detail of who they're paying, it's based on their timeline of events and, and their schedule. Uh, they're not required to provide us, these are, you know, these are all the vendors that we used in this time period. So I really wouldn't know, uh, if, if that was, if that is part of, right? Because, I mean, theoretically, th- they have been getting paid by the county in a timely manner. So any invoices that they incur is the responsibility of the general contractor to make sure that they are paying their subcontractors, so.
There's, and, and I believe this came recently, like today, or this just?
Uh, I believe I got it on, uh, Thursday, yeah.
So it, it's fairly recent, the court.
Yeah, it says it's dated nine fifteen, I believe.
Okay, the court has a couple of options, one is to go ahead and play, pay Broadus of what's listed, and then try to see how they're gonna resolve this because there's still more payments that will be, be made to Broadus. Or the court can approve the amount less this amount, um, to be, uh, sure that this amount of five thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars, I believe, uh, will be, will be paid by Broadus within a specific time, or, uh, the county's gonna withhold that amount to make sure that the amount is paid. Um, I believe this project is not close to completion, so there's still other payments. Um, and sometimes a lien is just to protect the vendor, I mean, they don't really intend on closing quickly, but they do have the right to do that. Uh, but at this point, I think it's really up to the court how you want to handle that expense.
I.
Certainly have a conversation with Broadus about.
Absolutely.
Any notices for non-payment, and we're paying you timely and diligently.
Yeah, I, 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 no, I was just gonna say, I, I agree with you. Uh, and number one is, we're, we're already holding retainage, so this, there's more than this amount already covered in retainage somewhere. Uh, these kind of things are common and happen almost in every construction project, 'cause somebody gets their feathers ruffled. Uh, and I'm knowing Broadus, I, I have no doubt that they will resolve, um, technically, um, we can't close the contract till this is resolved. So, uh, I say, I mean, we've already, if this was from May of last year, then they've already been paid for this. I mean, if you wanna withhold fifty-eight hundred, I don't have a problem with that, but I don't think it's appropriate. Um, we've got plenty of retainage, we probably got in excess of half a million dollars in retainage, um, sitting out there. And they'll have to close this out before they can get, uh, we, we will re-release the retainage, so, um, we've still got several months to do that.
And, and that's correct, sir, that's what these changes are still actually, in, in, in situations where they'll have to make them correctly, so.
And I have not contacted, because I just received that, I've not contacted the vendor yet. Um, they, they may, may have very well been paid already and this got crossed in the mail, I don't know yet, but I did want, because it was a notice of lien that was filed, I, I did need to bring it to the court's attention, so.
It was made in twenty twenty-five, and A, they could have been paid in process time, B, they're gonna issue it, C, it could be the, the, our, your, Broadus needs to take it, and it's, it's missing in there, but.
My only cons, uh, I guess question is that the date of the lien and the notice is September fifteenth, uh, which was just last week. So I, 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 you know, without calling them to confirm, I don't know why a lien would have been filed dated nine fifteen. Right, no, 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 that's what I'm saying, that if it hasn't been taken care of, that would not surprise me because it would surprise me that they would file a lien on September fifteenth for invoice back from May.
And, and they have some deadlines that the lien has to be filed.
Mm-hmm.
In a specific period of time, uh, or its weight.
Right.
So they may just be trying to meet that deadline by filing it as well, but as you said, there's.
Right.
We just need to talk to Broadus and bring their attention, and they need to tell us where the action is. We probably ought to take this in the previous, maybe the brush, you know, what happens when we found out we weren't paying it, I think, what we.
They'll have to release the lien, now, uh, the vendor.
If, if the vendor has been paid by Broadus, they'll release the lien, yeah.
They'll have to file something with the county court's office to release that lien.
I, I mean, I, I, I will contact the, uh, Applied Thermal Solutions, who issued the lien to determine whether, to ask if it's been paid. What I need to know from you is, in the course of approving the bills, the invoice in there for Broadus of four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, if you're going to approve all of the bills that is in there, I'm just letting the court know. Or are you?
You're not asking for a sentence, it's not all the agenda like that, so, you're just asking, it's already in the bills as of since today?
It's, it's, it's in the bills for your approval today, correct? But I can withhold that invoice or, or proceed with your approval of paying the invoice?
I'm gonna at least make a phone call before checking the sentencing files. Okay, so all the retainments except the bills.
Wait, no, I'm not done yet, no.
All right.
Okay, um, so that's one, I, one, one item. The second item, I just wanted to update the court, um, on August the twenty-fifth, court date. Um, we, you approved the bills pending, uh, one of them was, uh, pending review of the invoice from Ardeo, um, equipment for the purchase of a piece of equipment. Um, and I advised the court that I was waiting to receive an updated invoice with the buy board contract number on there. If you remember, um, Commissioner Martin was absent that day, so he couldn't speak to it. But Commissioner Perdola advised the court after Commissioner Aiken asked what piece of equipment it was. Um, and I believe Commissioner Perdola responded that it was a used piece of equipment that he and Commissioner Martin had gone to look at. Um, so on that day, I requested for an updated invoice to reflect the buy board contract number because the purchase was, um, over fifty thousand dollars. Um, so since then, as of, as recent as last week, Monday, I finally received an updated invoice from Ardeo, um, from the, Josh Verrett is our salesman there at Ardeo. He did send me an updated invoice, the invoice, though, references a contract number with H G A Buy Purchasing Cooperative, which I wasn't familiar with, but he did, uh, send me the information stating that Wilson County was a member of that purchasing co-op. So I contacted that purchasing co-op, uh, to get information, I was excited to see that we had another, uh, avenue for, uh, purchasing co-op without having to go out for bid. Um, I went through the research, found the original conj, uh, interlocal agreement, that interlocal agreement between H G A, uh, Buy and Wilson County was actually signed back in the nineties when Judge Snobel was here. But it is a perpetual agreement, there is no cost to the county to, uh, be a member of that. But it is very similar to Buy Board, um, Texas Smart Buy, where they have multiple contracts on there that allow the counties, municipalities to review it. So in the course of all of that, um, Ardeo did send me the price, the contract number, um, and the price list for that piece of equipment, which is, and I don't know if I'm saying this right, but Sakai, Sa- S A K, Saki, S A K A I. Um, and so when, uh, I've reviewed the contract list, that particular piece of equipment, um, in a used form was not listed on there. So I pulled in our county attorney's office because I wanted to make sure before we submitted payment, because you had me hold the payment until we reviewed that. So I did get with, uh, Ms. Huron, she did all of her research, um, that invoice still has not been paid, if it's, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Martin, but we've already, uh, taken ownership of that piece of equipment.
Yeah, they, they, yeah, they delivered it.
Right. And so.
Yeah, and then that's what they typically do, is deliver it and then send the invoice.
Right, and so, uh, we have not paid for that, if you remember, I believe the cost was eighty-five thousand, some change.
Eighty, yeah.
Yeah, um, so I have been working with the county attorney's office on, um, what do we do at this point? Uh, because H G A C Buy has very specific steps that must be followed when you're utilizing their purchasing co-op. Um, Commissioner Martin, myself, I mean, I, we wouldn't have known that, but our concern was with, um, with Ardeo. When Commissioner Martin sent me, and sent Amanda the request for the purchase order, the quote, uh, from Ardeo listed it as a new piece of equipment. And so typically, when we have new equipment that's being requested or purchased by Ardeo, we automatically know that Ardeo is on the buy board. Um, so a purchase order was, uh, created and sent to them. Um, and then it wasn't until after the fact that we, uh, received confirmation from Josh Verrett at Ardeo that this was a used piece of equipment, um, and then Ms. Huron, uh, confirmed that it wasn't part of the approved list of items from the, uh, H G A C board, or by buying, purchasing co-op. Um, so I wanted to give you that update because I need some, uh, direction on whether or not we are, I, I did email Commissioner Martin and, uh, Evelyn last week, just letting them know that I would hold off on payment until further, further direction. Uh, Ms. Huron had some options, I think.
We have a meeting after court to discuss what's the best course of action. I, I'm not sure if it's fixable, I thought we met the terms, uh, and I, yeah. Unfortunately, Ardeo is kind of bad about their quotes sometime, they always put new, everything's new, 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 and that's, uh, my bad for not seeing that when they submitted it. But, uh, at any way, we're, we're gonna meet after court to figure out what the best course of action, so I'd still recommend not to pay that, and it's not on the bills anyway, so.
Correct, it was on, uh, and Commissioner Martin, just so, for your knowledge, it was on and approved pending on that October, I'm, I'm sorry, August twenty-fifth bills, so. But I pulled it after court to hold it until this got resolved, so I just wanted to make sure, give you guys an update on that.
If I may, uh, just to point the clarification, uh, almost in the future, is that the purchase order said it was a new item, and it turned out to be a used item. So the purchase order needs to exactly match the item, but the concern was that it was a used item. I've contacted the buy board, I've contacted their administration, because they have contracts, and they have the vendors, and they have all the equipment. Initially, it is a great resource because it does provide for easy access to some equipment without having to go out and, and, and fit the purchase of some of this. But for future clarification, uh, used items are not, um, approved unless they do not have a title, um, and it carries the same warranty as a new item. So in that sense, it's really a demo, uh, because if they're used, they usually have a title that's already been issued and, and has previous owners. So please be careful that when you are looking at equipment like this, and they're saying used, it has to be, uh, so that there is no title, and they are offering the same warranty as a new item, just for a future reference when you look at them.
Yeah, and that's, that's where the confusion, well, that's where the confusion started, was he quoted, 'cause he quoted me two, two pieces of equipment, he quoted me a new and. because he quoted me two pieces of equipment, he quoted me a new and a used one. And the used one was certainly, it was a great deal, less than half of what a new one was. And so that was the quote that we provided them to give the PO. But I think when he typed up the quote, he forgot to change new to used, because that equipment is not titled, so that part of it doesn't enter into it, and it is used. And so I think we can, I think we can rectify this. If we can't, I'll give it back to him, I'll buy something else, that's not a problem. Because we'll make sure we do all this right, so.
And I think it's really just an issue with the buy board, because they go out and they seek vendors, and they have to know all these qualifications to provide these new items to government entities throughout the country. And when you have one vendor that says, oh, I can use you, you said much lower price, they're really getting around the buy board and their qualifications. So that's why they are very picky about, no, these are new items that we are representing, are available at this, at a reasonable cost. Now, they can offer discounts on a new item, but they do have to be, they can only be used under those conditions, so.
What was the total amount?
It's like eighty-two, eighty-three thousand, something like that.
So did the hundred K take effect on the first of October?
No, it took effect September one, but this purchase was made in prior to that.
So you canceled the settlement?
No, we haven't done anything yet, because they delivered it, then they submitted the invoice, and that's apparently when the question came up. And so it's just sitting in my yard right now, and it hasn't been paid for, and I haven't used it. So Ms. Huron and I are going to meet after court today, and we'll get it, we'll figure out what needs to be done. To either, if it is correct, and it was just the wrong terminology on the quote, that's all that needs to be fixed, and that's good, then we'll fix that and reissue the PO correctly with the right terminology on it, and then we should be good. If not, if it's not fixable, because it doesn't meet the terms that they decided were established for this buy, then we'll, I'll turn it back to them, and I'll buy something else.
Okay, and then the last item that I wanted to bring to your attention, which some of them are included in there. I have met with Judge Jared Shaw, JP one, on August the twenty-ninth. Amanda from my office notified Judge Shaw of being over budget in some of their line items, because she had received some invoices to be paid. Ms. Bravo copied me on that invoice, on that email. So on September fourth, I did all the research, provided a spreadsheet to Judge Shaw, which I've given you a copy of that. That spreadsheet that I just gave you is actually updated as of last week, Friday. Basically, in a nutshell, Judge Shaw has, by those pending invoices, if we were to enter those pending invoices, he will exceed his overall bottom line budget by that amount, which is the one thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-seven cents, and that's as of September fifteenth. I did break it down for Judge Shaw, he and I and his chief clerk and Amanda met on Friday. I gave him a copy of his general ledger report detailing all of the purchases since October one through present. One of my biggest concerns is the usage of the county card, credit card, for six hundred and twenty-four dollars and ten cents for a conference that was attended by one of his employees. That we have to pay that, because that is on the countywide bills, which are included in those bills for you to review. Again, I had to pull in our county attorney's office to determine, because there is local government code citing that an elected official cannot exceed their overall budget. And so I got with our county attorney's office to, for some guidance on what do we do. She did provide what can and cannot be done. I do have all of those invoices here that have not been paid. And so my question to legal was, is the county held liable? Do we have to pay these right now? Does Judge Shaw pay for them out of pocket? Like, what do we do? So I just wanted to let you know what the response was from our county attorney's office, and this is via email that I can also send to you, though. But she did notice, I mean, she stated that, Brenda, you've brought to our attention that there have been expenditures made by JP Jared Shaw, which exceed his budget allowance, and now there are outstanding invoices to be paid. These invoices should not be paid until the method and source of payment is determined. Texas Local Government Code one eleven dot zero one ten states that after final budget approval, the commissioner's court must spend only in strict compliance with the budget, except in cases of emergency. Counties are not permitted to spend more than the amount budgeted for a particular purpose unless proper budget amendments are made before the expenditure. If the expenditure has been made, below are the options on how to address this. Options for payment after an over-budget expenditure. A budget amendment post facto is not legal if done after the expenditure. However, if discovered soon enough, the commissioner's court may try to retroactively amend the budget to cover the expenditure. This must follow proper procedures, such as public notice, open court for your approval. Amending the budget after the fact may not protect county officials from liability, depending on timing and intent. Option two is the use of contingency funds. If the county budget includes a contingency or emergency line item, the commissioner's court may allocate money from this line item to cover the overage. This must still be formally approved in commissioner's court. Option three would be delay the payment into next fiscal year. If payment has not been made, the county may refuse to pay until the next budget cycle, when funds can be legally appropriated. However, this can harm the county's reputation and may violate contract terms with the vendors. This will also require court approval, as the expenditure was insured during a previous budget cycle. Option four is non-payment and disallowing the claim. The county auditor or commissioner's court may refuse to pay the expenditure if it was unauthorized, illegal, or made without proper approval. Vendors or employees who made the purchases may not be reimbursed. And then option five is personal liability of officials. If an official or employee authorized or makes a payment in violation of the budget, they may be personally liable. Texas courts have upheld personal liability in cases of illegal expenditures, and some counties require bonds or insurance to cover such liabilities. What cannot be done is the county cannot legally pay for over-budget expenses without proper budget authority. Transferring funds between departments without a formal budget amendment is not allowed. It would be the advice of the county attorney's office that the matter be brought before commissioner's court to either approve in the next cycle, provide a documentation that is for a previous cycle expenditure. Number two, payment from the reserve for unexpected expenses, or that the expenditure is disallowed and the court deems it as a personal liability, but the items purchased would remain the property of the county. I bring all of that to your attention, because it is, will directly affect those invoice, the bills that have been insured, plus the ones that have not been issued for payment. Judge Shaw, at our meeting on Friday, I asked him, or suggested to him, that it would be helpful if he would attend commissioner's court, so that if you had any questions, I certainly didn't want to speak on his behalf, but allow him to address the court if you did have questions. And Judge, I'm sorry, I did want to just advise the court also. I asked Ms. Huron if this was allowed to be spoken to in this agenda item, and she did advise that yes, because it was for approval of county bills, so.
What this has been more appropriate as an agenda item to deal with, I have, and the bills? Listen, there, as you said, so we take on liability if we take them proven, potentially, and we. Go ahead and walk up to this person.
Yes, well, you're not allowed to approve it, it's technically a budget. I mean, if you do it, if you do it, it would be violating the local government code. Because, but there are ways, and she mentioned several ways, if you can address it. And it can be done as a separate agenda item, but this is part of the expenditures and expenses that are being requested. And this particular line item, I believe, is in this current expense. So you need to make a determination, and this is discussion as to whether or not you want to approve that specific expenditure, or what you want to do with it, knowing that it exceeds the budget for this particular department, or this particular.
So, if I may, this was a, an issue where, after our budget was approved for the next fiscal year, I took a look at what we had versus what we were looking at for the year. I authorized my chief clerk to spend as much of our budget as possible to try to maximize our budget to include copier paper, and ink, and office furniture. That's what this is about. So we're looking at less than one percent over my budget. But the thing is, is that when I authorized her to make these purchases, we were going off of numbers based off of the operational statement received from the auditor, that we made our decisions based on that. Apparently, there were bills that crossed in the night, that we didn't have factored into our decision. And that's why we're nineteen hundred dollars over. So I realize that I can delegate my authority, but not my responsibility. And so if the court does not wish to make that payment for the nineteen hundred dollars over my budget, I will assume that responsibility and take a no-pay due for making that. So I fully assume that responsibility. It's entirely up to you as to how you wish to resolve it. But I know that next year, I did already propose a solution to how we might not have this next year with the auditor. It's to say, in the final quarter of the fiscal year, every month going into the final quarter is send a report, so that you know exactly what has been spent and approved, so you know when you're butting up against the end of the year, what's still in your budget. If I had had that report in a timely fashion, I probably would not be standing here before you today, asking you to kindly pay that bill, or have me write that check. That is something that would be a good use of potential policy change going forward, that all elected officials and their departments get that monthly statement for operations that would show how much you have left.
Okay, Judge, so now we're wanting to audit with the yearbook?
No, no, my clerk is.
But it hasn't happened in these.
Right, so we did have some.
Any other JP?
No, it is not. The thing is that I was trying to maximize my budget, because this past year, we're already at, you know, I have appeared before you before to say that we're busy. This is part of that, in that as we stand right now, we are already at the same amount of cases that we did all of last year, and we still have another quarter to go. That's a lot of ink, that's a lot of paper, and it did not get approved on my budget request for the coming year. So I needed to maximize this year's budget to make sure that I had those things going into next year.
May I speak to that, please? And this is just in response to the request for notification. So in July, when I provide copies, when I provide you your proposed budget worksheet that I provide in July, that has your year-to-date expenses as of that, and with one quarter left. And I advised every elected official and department head to remember that they still had three months left of expenses. So you did have those numbers in July, when I prevented, when I provided that budget worksheet. And again, as Judge Whitman alluded to, every elected official and department head, and this is information that I shared with Judge Shaw on Friday as well, they know that they can contact my office at any time and provide a copy. Almost every elected official or department head does request their statement of operations, at least monthly. And all four of us can provide that information. But to say that you're not notified is not, that's not an accurate statement, so I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that.
I didn't mean to make it an, what you would consider an inaccurate statement, but in the past, I've dealt in the army way. It's a push-pull system, where you can either pull the information by making a request, or it's pushed to you. In a push-pull system, the push is much more preferred, in that it's just part of your actual operations, where you know that if there are thirty departments, thirty reports should be made and sent out in a monthly, you know. Otherwise, you end up with the pull system, where when I'm requesting something, it might be the middle of the month, it might be the day before bills get paid. And that way, it's more accurate to have the push system to say, as of this date, these bills have been paid. You know, I know what has been going on. You know, at the end of the day here, it's something that I'm just presenting as a possible resolution for preventing this in the future. But yeah, I present to you that I will take responsibility for the nineteen hundred dollars, because we may have made an error. But when we sat down on Friday, we did result, we did see that there were bills that were being put against my budget, that myself and my chief clerk did not recognize. That they said precinct two, precinct three on the bill, and we hadn't seen it before. And we didn't recognize the vendor, or what it was being used for. So that presented some questions for me, is that, hey, you know, if I don't recognize the bill, and it has not been presented to me, that's going to affect the ability for me to see what my budget really is, because I'm not expecting that to be something to be applied against my budget.
So you're saying that you have bills that were being paid out of your budget to other precincts, JP?
Something that we didn't recognize. It was for software that we don't use, and I didn't recognize it, neither did my clerk.
You did total seventeen hundred dollars?
No, it was, our portion of it was like close to five hundred bucks.
I can speak to that. It was four hundred and twenty-four dollars split by all four JP offices, that's for their annual software. Again, these are invoices that are reviewed and approved by every elected official. And my question to Judge Shaw was, that invoice was back from, I believe it was February sometime, at the beginning of the year. Don't approve something if you don't know what you're approving. So those, just like the four of you, or five of you, receive your bills for review, so does every other elected official. When in fact, we did the research, it is part of the software that he uses for his office. So it wasn't anything that was out of, not coded appropriately, or that we were notified.
So you do get to review your bills, you sign off saying approve or deny, or whatever?
I do.
Because, I mean, I know whenever we share equipment, so, and you'll see on our bills, it says shared equipment, you know, and it's split up between all of us. Matter of fact, they see the email that goes out, whenever I'm like, hey, you know, I just bought this, but it's for shared equipment, piece of gear. But you are approving your bills, is what I'm asking.
I am approving my bills.
And the invoice, I'm sorry, go ahead, Nimita.
Come to the mic, come to the mic.
If I don't receive, and y'all know this, approvals from y'all, within a couple of months, or before the fiscal year ends, I do send out reminders. And I know y'all have seen that, so, and I have sent out reminders to each department.
On the net pro, on the net pro invoice, that, for that four hundred and twenty-four dollars, I did do some research, and actually JP two and three no longer use the service, but that is an annual invoice that came, and they, the vendor failed to remove JP two and three on that invoice, but it was in fact for one and four. And so the other concern that I brought to Judge Shaw, which was very concerning, was the use of the county credit card for the conference that his employee attended. the use of the county credit card for the conference that his employee attended. The, that again is something that the county has to pay. The credit card bill, the Citibank bill is in this bill right here, but the $624 is for the hotel stay and then parking at the Fairmont. But there was also a gas charge for $20.02 used with the county credit card. However, the employee also submitted a request for reimbursement for mileage for attending, and Judge Shaw signed off on both of those. And so I again mentioned to Judge Shaw, I mean, he knows that you can't get both, you can't fill your car up with gas to go to a conference and submit requests for reimbursement for mileage, it's one or the other. So I reminded Judge Shaw that it is very, very important for him to make sure that he understands what he's approving because it's his signature on all of these for approval.
I'm Wanda Reed, and I'm Judge Shaw's chief clerk. And let's go back to the NetPro that Ms. Trevino was talking about. The NetPro, we have never received a bill for NetPro, and we have never approved a bill for NetPro. When Ms. Trevino was stating that Ms. Bravo had notified Judge Shaw on the 29th of August that he was over budget. At that time, I was at the TAC conference, Brenda saw me there, so I was already at the conference. That conference had been scheduled for me to go to way before we knew we were over budget. The records that I keep does not show that we're over budget. This is why we set up the meeting, okay? So the hotel room didn't, of course, did not bill us until after the conference was over. That's the way it works. I did try to cancel this, not because we knew that we were over budget, but because I needed to cancel, but it was going to cost us more to cancel than it was for me to go ahead and go to the conference. And I'm glad I went because I did learn a lot, okay? But at that time, I did not know we were over budget, okay? But going back to NetPro, I have never approved a bill from NetPro. So I called over to the auditor's office, Brenda wasn't in, Ms. Bravo wasn't in. So I talked to Ms. Lobbis, and she did send me a bill, and that's what Ms. Trevino was talking about. And it says, this bill was to JP two and three back from April, well, actually from March 13th is when it was paid. And it does not have JP one or JP four on it. And I've never gotten a bill for NetPro that I've approved, that I'm aware of. Not to my knowledge. I use NetData. I know we get bills from NetData, but...
NetPro is the interface that talks to NetData. It's an annual thing, it's, we've been paying it every year.
They may have been paying it, but I've never seen. This is the first bill I've seen. So to say that we, that I've approved it, or Judge Shaw has approved it, I don't believe he's seen one either. But if you can show me one that we've approved, I would gladly say I'm wrong, but I don't think I've ever seen one.
And would I advise Judge Shaw on Friday with that if there is an invoice? Would I advise Judge Shaw on Friday was that if there is an invoice that is in question for services that are being billed to his department, it is not my responsibility to contact the vendor to verify that. Now, I will tell you, just as it is normal, normally, those invoices get sent to all of the elected officials. If Judge Shaw did not receive it, at some point, we would not have paid the bill had we not received payment approval. So again, if that was paid in March, that was already on the bills and already in the report provided to Judge Shaw in July when I provide the budget worksheets. So to say that you're not aware, if Ms. Reed is not aware, I can't help that because ultimately it's the elected official's responsibility to ensure that the budget is maintained. So I cannot speak to that, but...
We're squabbling over less than 1% of my budget. It's an error on apparently my part, and I'm willing to accept that, that we try to maintain as much of our budget as we can so that we utilize it to the best of its ability to do our jobs, not just for this year, but for next year as well. You know, I don't want to waste your time any more than we already have on this matter. So if you choose not to pay the bill, just have it taken out of my check. I'm fine with that. We all have better things to do than deal with this, and I have, I will move forward knowing that I'd need to scrutinize the bills a little more closely and not try to maximize my budget as much as I tried to this year because apparently we had a, an error of math.
Ms. Huron, of those five recommendations that were... Do you have a recommendation for us to move forward?
Well, you can... You can't just pay it. You have to be able to allocate how it's to be paid because it's over budget. It's like being overdrawn, whether it's a dime or, I mean, you're overdrawn on your budget. So you have to find a way to pay it. So any one of those will work. I mean, you can decide to allocate it towards next year's budget and say that that amount is going to be, they're going to have to wait until after October on the new budget, and it's going to come out of next year's budget. You can determine that it's a personal liability to keep track of things. You can use the fund, I believe that there's a fund for situations just these. I mean, it's really up to you. It's just a matter of addressing how it needs to be paid. It's not an emergency, so I don't believe that that would qualify. I don't think a budget amendment also would be appropriate. So it's probably either from the extra fund, next year's budget, or personal liability, I think would be one of the three ways that would be appropriate to deal with it, depending on court's preference.
You were two weeks away from moving. Sorry. We'll do it in a few days.
The invoices, the invoices that have not been paid, if that is something that you want to open up the door for and consider, you can. However, the Citibank credit card cannot wait. That is in these bills for your approval. We are held liable to pay the entire Citibank credit card statement, which the $624, I believe, and 10 cents is for JP one. So we would have to pay that, and there would not be a way to allocate that toward next year's budget because it has to be paid this week.
I believe in the past, when confronted with this situation, and whether it was done right or wrong in the past, I don't know. So that's my question because as I recall, came up with a similar situation about three years ago, maybe it was four years ago, and what we did was we, I guess we took it out of the reserve fund, paid it, but deducted it from next fiscal year's budget. Is that, do I remember that right?
It was a similar situation, but the problem there was that those invoices had already been paid in that particular situation. It was for JP four, if you remember, it was a vehicle upfitting and things like that, yes. And so what we, what the court decided to do was reduce his budget in the next budget year, reduced his budgeted amount by that amount that was being paid in this budget year.
Is that not the same thing with this call? No, or I'm confused?
Well, it is, it is, it is, but it isn't. The difference was, is what she was saying was those bills were paid, I guess, before somebody ran a report and found out he was over budget.
Correct, yeah.
And then that's the way it was addressed.
And so when I brought it to the court's attention, the court decided to reduce the new fiscal year budget by that amount because I think it was like a little over $4,000 in that, in that particular case. So his budget was reduced by that amount in the next fiscal year's budget. So...
So the thing that's hanging right now is the credit card.
Right. We have, so by you approving the bills that I've presented for payment, you're approving that credit card statement that includes that $624.10, and then...
But that will put him over budget.
Oh, he's already over budget, correct. He's over budget right now by the $160.98. Those are the things that have already been paid. And then the invoices that we are holding are the one, two, three, four, five, the five invoices that are pending that have not been entered, and the county credit card has been entered but not paid yet.
The other thing is that the credit card has payment for fuel, and then we have a mileage or conference reimbursement here. That needs to be taken off definitely because the credit card is solid. We've already paid for it.
So could I make a suggestion? If I take on the credit card payment to pay for her trip and leave the, take that as my personal responsibility, if I might ask that the commissioners would use the remaining amount, whatever that might be, to fulfill that either through, it's your choice to either have me pay it, pay the rest of the bills, or use the contingency fund and then subtract that from my next year's budget. I know that this will be the only time that this is going to happen for me, so I will be much more vigilant with my budget come October 1st.
So you're asking, credit card payment for the fuel and us take on the reimbursement? Is that what you're asking?
No, 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 no.
So I will take on the entire credit card payment, just so that's not an issue. Have that reduced from my pay.
Then you're saying anything else that's legitimate?
Yep.
Is that, is that doable?
Yes, it's doable. You have to take action that the expense, the credit card expense will be paid with the understanding that it becomes a personal liability of Judge Shaw, and that he will reimburse the county that credit card payments with them given probably shipping before the beginning of the budget.
Yeah, take it out of my pay right now.
So, and that could be the action that the court takes as to how that will be done. It's going to be paid with the understanding that it becomes a personal liability and will be reimbursed as a personal expense. And then the rest, you have to be able to...
I'm good with any decision that you make.
So if the judge pays the credit card, can the rest of the bills just be pulled out of the...
Amanda, I'll ask Amanda to speak to that because those bills are on our, were billed to our Amazon corporate account. I don't know, Amanda, if, because these were invoices that were ordered back in August. I don't know if we hold off on payment until October, if that will put a stop on our Amazon corporate account, Amanda.
It still goes back to the budget year that it was incurred in, even if we paid it, it would still be assigned by your office to be in the previous budget.
Yeah, these all have payment due by September 26th and the 28th of September.
And they're pretty high amounts, so...
Yeah, they are $205.37, $75.99. $94.91 were for shirts that were ordered, and I'm assuming those were things, because I did speak with Judge Shaw prior to giving him the option of returning any items so that we could get credit for, but there was only $16.98 of items that were returned for credit. So it's really those, those three big Amazon invoices. I just don't know if we don't pay them, if we hold off into these, will they hold it?
They won't do anything, but they'll just send us reminders, constant reminders.
And then I guess the other question is regarding the, since the credit card was used by Ms. Reed for putting gas in her car, does that void this entire mileage reimbursement altogether? Okay, I just wanted to make sure so I could take that off of the list as well. So really, I guess if the court is going to approve the $624.10 to be paid out of Judge Shaw's check, then it would be the decision on these three invoices. Do we want to pay them now to remain in good standing with Amazon, or do you want me to just hold them and the next time we come to court will not be until October the 13th?
I think, Judge Shaw, would you address that, please, sir?
So if delaying payment is going to put the counties' standing with Amazon in jeopardy, just take the whole thing out of my check. I don't want to have anything looked badly upon the county. So to resolve it, you know, I will happily ask the treasurer to make sure that anything that the auditor has to say as far as what my office owes can be deducted. You know, that's just the honorable thing to do. So that's what I'm asking for. Just let me pay it, and we'll all move on. Because I, I think we've spent more time on this than is necessary. That's all I have.
Thank you, Judge. I'll make a motion to approve the bills provided that Judge Shaw pays for all the overages in this budget's personal responsibility. Did that cover it? Ms. Trevino?
Yes. I will just confirm with legal and with the payroll department that it is done correctly because I want to make sure that we are within our legal authority to do that. And it sounds like Ms. Huron...
Because if the court is going to allocate the overdue budget as a personal responsibility or personal liability, then that's the action, and I believe that's what your motion speaks to. And also that any items purchased are the property of Wilson County. So if there's paper, whatever purchased...
It's just paper and ink.
It is, it does.
No, it's not. It's uniforms, it's shirts, it's date, I mean, your office supplies in general. I just want, I'm not trying to argue the point, I just want to make sure that we're clear on what, because we do look through the invoices, so it's not just paper and ink.
Because then people would just buy things on their own and say, well, they're lying anyway. So no, it is county property because it was purchased on behalf of the county, an overage of a budget, and the court is going to allocate that as a personal responsibility or personal liability, and that's why the motion was set.
And you need to have the number, if my math is correct, taken out of mileage for the conference at the 15th, 8th, 37th.
I'll have to...
She's going to, she's going to make sure that whatever it is, is...
If it's not reflected, the only thing that's reflected in the bills for you to approve is the credit card statement, which if you approve that, it will be paid, and then I will work out the details of the table. and then I would work out the details of the table.
Do you have a motion on that? Let me make a warning, sir. All right, now, a little bit of discussion there. Does it have to all come out at one time, or is each checker can be allotted over budget?
We have done that in the past, not this situation, but where we do payments. But if we want to do that, I would like a document saying, "No, no, we're going to go for both parties to sign off on saying..."
That's a criminal amount, yeah. So does that have people, anyone on that?
That's probably what's being said.
I'll send an email out, and then we'll have Judge Shaw sign a...
Payroll deduction?
Payroll deduction authorization, so that we have it filed. It'll not page in there, whatever is said.
If I may, if something the county, how the county wants to be paid, it's Judge Shaw's preference that it can take in from his pay, and then that's from his end, because it's affecting his payroll, and this is the choice that he's making. But it's up to the court to determine, you know, that it's all to be paid in thirty days, sixty days, whatever the court determines, and then how he wants to do that through his payroll, we can work that out with him, like that.
That's another motion.
No. No, well, we, I mean, typically, yeah. Typically, that is something that the county treasurer and myself will review with whoever we're doing the payroll deduction with, and it doesn't typically go before the court. We'll ensure that it gets handled in it.
All right. Any other discussion regarding the payments?
I have a notification, just real quick, that obviously, normally our bill payment went a whole lot different today than it has been. But Precinct Four expenditures, you've seen, were receiving equipment, and it was a new tractor and a new shredder to be able to take and work the roads. Our older tractors gave us more problems, and it's a hard to proceed with that.
I want to call for, will all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Oppose against a name? I have a motion passed, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Which was made by Commissioner Teens, everybody can just take, all of your favors, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose against, we are adjourned, and it is eleven thirty-two. Commissioner, if you don't leave, we have a quick... Let's take a bathroom break.